I'm your camera.
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it.
Not stop.
All right, welcome everybody to the second daily item of the debate. For those of you that were here last week, we did our best, we did everything we could possibly do to make it decent, and this week we did a little better, I think. Everybody got, everybody's fitting up for this week, so it looks pretty good again. So, I'd like to introduce current county commissioner Rick Shock. Sam Chikatano. Kim Best. Louis Taylor. Louis Schamroth. Ed Quiggle. We'll be open for about two hours. Again, after the first hour, we're gonna take a break. We're gonna get started. It's gonna be the same kind of format, each one is going to, they're gonna have about a minute to answer. We're gonna try to be as clean as we can, because there are seven of them, one will answer every question. So, good luck to all of the participants. We thank you very much for coming, and we're gonna get started. And how we're gonna do it, so everyone knows, we're, we're gonna start with Commissioner Rick Shock, and then every other question's gonna bounce down that way. So, good luck. And the first question's gonna be asked by WK11. Introduce that one. WKOPA Jen Wakefin is here. Officer News item, editor Andy Eichman is here. Officer Daily item, Justin Strosser is here. Officer from the building standard journal Kevin Murphy's here. So, they're gonna get their wives, and we're gonna get started. Jen Wakefin's gonna start. So, there was some questions that were turned in, and they have been given to the reporters that are, that are there. The reporters have their own questions themselves. Good luck, everyone, and take it away, Jen.
Good evening. Commissioner Clausy recently talked about cutting spending to the bone since he took office in 2008. Many departments in the county say they are understaffed, the DA's being one example. What would you change going forward in the county budget, and how would you propose to pay for that?
Well, the, I did hear the recent statement that was made about the fact that we are down to the bone. If you go back and you check the minutes from the meeting when we took office in 2012, he stated the same thing. There was no further cuts that can be made, we were cut to the bone. I imagine if we look back a little further, we'll see that that statement was made again. And yet, what we have seen is cuts, and really, some of the ones that were, caused much of the contentiousness with our administration right at the beginning, were cuts that I felt were being done for purposes of vindictiveness. And I know were being done for that purpose, because they were stated behind closed doors. What we need to be doing is focusing our, our resources in the areas where we are lacking right now. And some of the places where those cuts came from are places where we need, particularly in law enforcement, to be staffed up. The way that you get to that is, and that you find the money for that is, there's a lot of waste that is still going on, no matter what Commissioner Clausy states. Much of that is people who are brought in to positions that frankly are not qualified for. And we need to end that in Northumberland County, that has plagued this county for decades, and has continued in these last eight years as well.
Hi. Hey, I'm doing the best I can, I'm sorry. There are seven of them. You got the first one. Yes, we can do quick opening statements, I apologize, that is my fault.
And also, will we get a warning or something while we're approaching? I, I saw some people looking over, so I figured I was probably going over. So, I don't know what to say.
But anyway, here are the opening statements. Thank you.
Okay. Do we wanna go from there for opening statements? So, I got to start first. Well, as I think most of you know, I'm a current commissioner, Rick Shock. I'm a native of Somberly, was born and raised outside of Somberly, left the area for probably about fifteen years, returned with my young and growing family in 2002. I'm an attorney here in Somberly. I've been a commissioner for the last four years. And I have a family with four children, two boys, two girls, and my lovely wife Paula, who unfortunately has to run and take care of all of that, and corral all of them when I'm off doing things like this. But, thank God for that, because I wouldn't be able to do all these things if it wasn't for her. But, you know, I got involved in, in county politics, because I wanted to make a change. I didn't like the way our county was being seen and portrayed, and, and we were losing, and we've continued to lose our relationships with neighboring counties that could benefit us, and I wanted to end to that. I've certainly run into my share of resistance. I'm looking forward to, hopefully, a future where we have a more collaborative effort, and the focus is less on the individual than the group and the county, and the tasks at hand.
Hello, my name is Sam Chikatano. I'm a lifelong resident of Northumberland County. I grew up in the Shamokin whole township area. I graduated from Shamokin High School in 1972. Went on to college at Lake Como College, and graduated in 1976, and played football under Coach Frank Girardi, who I'm very proud that I was able to get to be a mentor for me. I went on and was hired at Shamokin Area High School as a teacher, and also as a coach, and, and taught there for thirty-six years. I coached at many different schools, including the Shiloh Leaning, Our Lady of Lords, and Milton High School, and I'm still actually coaching at this time. Really enjoy working with people. I'm a member of Mother Capri Church Firdale Gun Club, and one of the things I, I'm real proud of is I was president of the teachers' union, and for six years, and a vice president for one year. And in that time, we negotiated two contracts without any type of incident, as even a thought of a strike or anything like that, because I think we got, we got along well with the administration, got along with the teachers, and got along with the school board, and that's what I hope to bring to our county government.
Good evening, I'm Kim Best. George Daley and I are deeply grateful for the press and the public tonight, your interest in this race. I'm here and I'm running, because I believe in Northumberland County, and I have a vision that I want to share with you. I see Northumberland County being respected again by its neighbors. I see it running responsibly. I see us earning the trust for elected officials once again. I don't want to spend a lot of time on my resume or rehashing the last four years. What I want to do is invite you to look forward with me to the next four years, to where my partner and I tackle light in our neighborhoods, there's job creation and educational opportunities. What I, what I would like to do to this evening is for you to understand what Northumberland County needs most, and that's a team. A team that has a clear vision, a team that has experience, and a plan for success. That team is George Daley and I. Thank you.
Hi, I'm George. In the last sixteen years, I've been a municipal official. I've learned that good government comes from one thing, that's teamwork. After the last four years, I think we can all agree that teamwork isn't, hasn't been there. Kim Best and myself are committed to teamwork and commitment. For almost two decades, I've been working in the trenches for municipal government. I've, I've seen the county row offices, particularly the commissioners, not help the local municipalities. It's a tough era out there. We've walked a walk. We are prepared to make sure that it all starts in one position, him and myself are prepared to institute our time and our knowledge, and to make our county a better place to live. Thank you.
I'm Bill Schamroth. I've been in this area fifty-four years in business, and several businesses in the world that have been in this. And I've done recover about seven counties. I do a lot of work out in the old regions, where I really built my business up here. And now...
Pull the microphone in a little bit, Bill.
Okay. Better?
That's better.
First leg's strict. Okay. Now, I'm Bill Schamroth. I spent four years in Marine Corps in Washington DC, and I was a stenographer and court reporter for the TruStar Dental. Of course, I got to work at the headquarters Marine Corps Navy in Pentagon in the Senate Office Bureau. So, I have a little experience, and then got involved with government contracts after I got out of Marine Corps, and that's what led me on to my own business, and cleaning business and real estate, and that was my whole secret. Being successful, to be honest with you. But, I know fifty-four years in this town, and the surrounding towns, I've seen things come and go. But, I'll tell you, if you are here, you have a good team, and you're smart, and you're not bad. Believe me, if you have that, you will have success. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Quiggle Jr. I'm the constable, elected constable, Somberly's ninth ward. I'm the champion of liberty in the Constitution. I reject the notion that we have to raise taxes. I believe the two parties, the two major parties have failed us, and I believe our past commissioners are an example of that. I've been involved in political activism for over a decade. I'm on the national leadership team and an advisor to the Solutions Institute, and I'm also the state coordinator for People Against the NDA-Aid. I think voters of Northumberland County have an amazing opportunity to elect a board of commissioners that is, doesn't have anybody on the two-party system, and as I said, the two-party system has failed us. It's time for an alternative.
I'm John Byrd. I'm on the board of the Susquehanna Valley Libertarian Party, and getting a party off the ground is a lot like trying to get a train moving. You start off really slow, and hopefully, the momentum gets to be unstoppable. Last year, we ran one person for one office in one county. This year, we're running people in eight offices in three counties. The majority of the country now identifies as politically independent or unaffiliated, and the Libertarian Party is the largest independent party there is, larger than all the other independent parties combined. So, we intend to appeal to the voters who have decided every election in our lifetime, and they are the voters who stay at home. And we're gonna keep running options until the voters have realized that we have been offering them change, and we can start getting in the offices, and then you'll all see real change. Thank you.
Okay, now hopefully, there'll be no more mistakes. Rick had already answered the first question, so we'll continue on.
Did you read it? Yes.
Where is it? There it is. Many departments in the county have said they are understaffed, and their budgets have been cut to the bone, the DA's being an example. What would you do to change the county budget, and how would you pay for those sorts of things?
Okay. First of all, wasteful spending is something you have to cut, but a lot of the people I have talked to walking throughout the county, a lot of the departments that were cut were not cut because of wasteful spending. I think they were cut for many different reasons, and I'm not here to judge what those reasons were. I always felt the county commissioners, the county, they were in charge of creating jobs in the county, not cutting jobs. And if you're cutting a, a job that doesn't need to be here anymore, that's fine, but a lot of the things that were done in the past, like closing the Mountain View Manor with the transportation department, a lot of those people I have talked to walking around the county have told me, those, those industries were making money for the county. And, and we still at this time don't realize the impact that had. What I was told at the last meeting when they spoke, over three hundred jobs were cut since the administration was in, that's three hundred families that lost their income, that's three hundred, three hundred family and their kids that now maybe had to move out of the area. And I think we could have kept those departments. I think, of course, wasteful spending has to be taken care of, but, but spending on those where people are gonna lose jobs that don't necessarily have to happen, shouldn't happen.
The number one responsibility of any elected commissioner is to run and effectively manage human services in the courts. I don't agree that there's waste in Northumberland County. All the waste was rooted out. You see, I was part of that. In 2009, there were just over eleven hundred jobs. There are now just over four hundred jobs, about four hundred and eighty-six jobs. Now, some of those cuts were necessary, and in the fiscal environment that we were in, I would agree they were necessary. But where those cuts took place should have been done with a scalpel and not a sledgehammer, and they shouldn't have been done with a personal vendetta. Where I see it most as an attorney is in the court system. And where those cuts were made are hurting us, they're hurting our residents. When the district attorney's office can't manage their caseload, and we have criminals walking the streets, because they have a caseload that as an attorney, if I had, would be malpractice, that is inefficient government. Now, I believe there could be, there could be jobs where they are overpaid, and right now, we have an opportunity where people took advantage of early retirement, so we can bring people in at a lower salary. But I believe we should replace some of these essential jobs for all of us. It's our responsibility, and we need to take an honest look at the budget. Every year, the commissioners told us that they needed to make cuts, and every year, they patted themselves on the back and said we have a surplus. Thank you.
I believe it's essential, we need to start putting people back to work through this county, and we need to start in Northumberland County. As far as, we have departments that have shrank, that were, they're nowhere even effective anymore. A planning commission has shrank from eight, ten people down to one, I believe it's one now, and a secretary. You know, that is part of the backbone of our county. That is where our start, that's where our grants, that's where our effectiveness starts, whether it comes to any type of economic development, or any type of services that are put out among the whole county. And that's just one example, and which will follow through with all the others. We'd effectively look through it. And yes, there's always a concern of paying for it. I get that. But we're gonna have to work through our budget and get to a point where, where we put these, these jobs in place, and we start making effective government, where we turn around in the planning commission, and we start making an investment back into our community, they will start paying for themselves. And we can start growing our community, and we can fix our community. Thank you.
Well, I, I travel around this area, and I travel every day, all day. I can see so many things that, first of all, I did the county, and I don't mean this particularly, but for ten years, I was in the prison, and it was in the U.S., and military, and the government. So, that's one thing you gotta start doing. You have to work on the budget, and have to pay, relax, and, and the, some of the other things I've seen, and I don't know, is when I was a, we had a carpool. Somebody needed a vehicle, you went down the carpool. I see so many vehicles, and I don't know if we're using them. Now, I'm not in that position to check them out, but when I count them, and I know how many there are, and I did that already, I was always wondering why, because how many guys, why aren't these cars moving every day? Apparently, I don't know if they're paying for these, but it costs one piece.
Well, I disagree with Commissioner Clausy when he says there's no more spending to cut. I mean, if you look at the expenses of the commissioners, there's almost half a million dollars there. I also think we can cut some with the prison. Obviously, we're gonna need to repair or build a new prison, but I think we can reduce prison costs by utilizing alternatives to incarceration, things such as house arrest, reporting centers, and just not jailing nonviolent offenders. I think we can cut spending that way, and hopefully, cut taxes.
I was at that meeting, and I thought actually the most interesting part that came out afterwards was that the county spending went from ninety-five million to sixty-four million. It's a thirty-one million dollar reduction, so credit where credit is due, that's nearly, you know, the cost of an entire prison, or at least a courthouse, which should not be demolished, rebuilt anywhere else. But, you know, government jobs are overhead to an economy. Government doesn't create jobs, it should be cooperative, facilitating. The corporate world is competitive, and government should be trying to help fund areas where people can cooperate, and hopefully, we can get into that with some of the educational opportunities in this area. But, you know, if, if employment through government would work socially, it would work, and it's obviously not working. And now, talking about cutting things to the bone, there are certain things you do not want to cut to the bone, especially things like drug rehabilitation, addiction, and mental health. I don't know how far they were cut, but if they were cut, I would definitely want to put that back, because you can't make a better investment, you and me, with that.
We'll move on to a topic that I think is probably on everybody's mind, and that's the prison. If you could each outline what you would like to see happen, and I know that in some people's minds, the, the horse has already left the barn, but assuming that you could start from scratch when you get into office, if you get into office, tell us what you would like to see happen with the county prison.
First of all, I think it was irresponsible for anyone to purchase the property they did without any type of clause, that if the cleanup, or cleanup had to take part, it would have came out of the purchase price, or, or the whole deal could have been, you know, dropped. So, that's the first thing. The second thing, the whole, I was at the meeting when they came and talked about the contaminants in the soil. Whether they can be cleaned up or not, I'm not sure, I'm not an expert on that, but I know one thing, I will not approve any type of building a prison or anything else that's for habitat of humans, or anyone on that property, unless we have some type of written document saying that they are one hundred percent sure there are no contaminants that are gonna affect people. I will not be responsible ten years, twenty years down the road for someone who says they got something from working or being housed in, in housing on that property, unless we are guaranteed one hundred percent that nothing like that could ever happen, and I'm not sure anybody will be able to do that. My alternative for the prison would be, first, look at the old, old prison walls, try to build some type of high-rise prison there. If it's feasible, do some type of study on that.
My opinion is that the old facility, as beautiful and historic as it is, is not feasible. My other not only opinion, but it is a fact, George and I have been invited to many of the meetings, and we've in fact spoke to the engineers that are working on the site, and we've seen the plans, is that this prison is our responsibility to build it, and I'll tell you why. We are spending a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars per month, having our prisoners scattered throughout other facilities. We are spending anywhere from sixty-five dollars a day per head, up to eighty dollars a day per head in these other surrounding facilities. It is our duty and responsibility to have a prison. It's in the county code. Now, let's deal with the reality, not our wish list, sorry. The reality is that the Moran site, the Celatek site, is now county property, and there have been hundreds of thousands of dollars in investment, if you will, spent on preparing that land for this project. It would be irresponsible to start over. Now, I'm not saying had we been there a year ago, this is what we would have done. I don't have that luxury. It's my responsibility to get this prison built, to do it safe, but to get it built.
For years and decades, and furthermore on that, you know, boards change. You inherit, you would inherit a lot from previous boards, so you have to, notice these up, and you have to work with them. You know, not to say that that would have been my specific spot itself, we don't know that, but the current board has picked that right now, whether I agree or don't agree it, like my partner Deco. It is purchased, there's millions of dollars that are spent on that property and the amount of work that's there. We need to move forward to the assumption, but we have to make sure that we do build an effective prison. We need to have something in place there, as far as that we can house and be ready for the problems that are gonna happen in our surrounding counties. That's gonna happen. You know, we were first on the list. Our, our sister counties have the same type of prisons that we have, you know, and it's gonna be up. So, why don't we use this as a learning experience, and make sure that we can be in the driver's seat, and instead of spending that money out, be more on the collection portion of it, so it's not a burden on our taxpayers?
Okay, I'm, I'm the forty million dollar man. I'm gonna tell you that you can take those stone, and three county commissioners couldn't lift one, out of that jail. And that jail, all you had to do is put a fourth floor on that jail, and a new roof, and I cleaned hundreds of our baby's jobs, and I know, in fifty-four years, I done a lot. But, that place could have been cleaned up, and that stone will last for thousands of years, long after we're gone. So, in order to take care of that, I would take the twenty-two acres we bought, I put in Celatek property, and I would make that an industrial park, and I would put three to four industries in there, maybe five or six, but it's twenty-two acres, and you could get a tax base there, and you could bring more dogs to this area than you even realize. And believe me, it's right along the river, and we're near Ruby Eighty, we're near all the interstate routes at your point. And here we are, playing, I would have had that jail open, and we would have paid for anybody if they didn't start a matter way. That's how you get done, do a matter way. Thank you.
I think there's been an agenda to build a bigger prison even before the prison fire occurred. If you look at what happened after the prison fire occurred, a lot of these people were released, were given alternatives to incarceration. So, to return to what I said previously, I think we need to utilize alternatives to just putting people in jail. You know, the, the county has a duty to protect people's health, and we shouldn't be sending people to work or jailing people on a property that's contaminated. So, you know, this agenda to build a bigger prison while finally crime continues to go down, I just don't think it makes sense. I think we can save money by trying to repair the prison. If we can't repair the whole prison, I think we should repair it at a reduced capacity, and preserve the rest of it for historical purposes.
Ted just said, I was at both of the meetings, where Commissioner Clausy had said that he recommended that we close the prison while it was still operating before the fire, so that we could sell the stone. And then later, I quizzed him on that, and had him admit that the stone really, as President Pennsylvania had admitted, that the stone, the stone really wouldn't have been worth that much. But I definitely agree that the first thing that a new board should do is evaluate the reuse of the old prison site. One thing that confused me is the right wing, I understand, was not damaged in the fire. So, if we're in such a hurry to house prisoners, why didn't we do emergency repairs in the center of the prison, reopen the right wing, do things like the reporting centers, like Ed's talking about here, and maybe get the need for the prison down, and maybe we just do it the right way? Bill, maybe you'd help clean it out when... Bill, maybe you'd help clean it out when we get that far. I looked over both of the Apex reports, it's like two thousand pages of reports, and I personally don't think that the capping methods that they're talking about will be robust enough to be sure that the contaminants are not going to spread and to be able to come up to the new foundation. And, you know, just overall, you want to fix the number of brownfields and old buildings you have sitting around, so, I mean, why build new? Maybe we could have to. I'm willing to look at everything, but, you know, you see the empty jailbreak building, you see Teen Challenge, and you just think, you know, can we reuse something that we already own or have?
The story of our prison and that current situation is a familiar one in Northumberland County. It's a story of lost opportunity. When that prison burned, we had an opportunity to take a look at how we handle corrections overall in Northumberland County, with an eye to investing rather than overly investing in the old way of doing things, which is warehousing people in a traditional prison facility, which has proven to not work. It's just a revolving door. The recidivism rate is, you know, around seventy percent or something like that. To start to invest in newer ways of doing things, such as day recording centers, work release centers, you still have to have a base prison as well. But particularly at the county level, the vast majority of the people who are in our county prisons are there because of a combination of substance abuse issues and resulting crimes because of those dependencies, and mental health issues. So again, we lost an opportunity to build something that was much smaller, and also just very quickly, and I think most people know this, I was in favor of looking at retooling the existing prison and cutting that out. That wasn't my opinion that was feasible, it was our consultants at the time. Reading our first question from the audience tonight. Will you vote to raise the salaries after four years? After all, it is a part-time job. That's from the card, not my own calendar.
I disagree that it is a part-time job. I've been working for the county for twelve years. There's very little county jobs that are part-time jobs. They demand every hour of your attention. You don't have the opportunity to vote for a salary increase the way the law is written. And unfortunately, our salaries were chosen for us by the board that preceded us.
As we're all aware with the salary cuts, my personal opinion was I didn't want to run for Commissioner for the salary itself. Apparently, I want to work long hours and have long days, but it wasn't about that. Given an answer four years from now, I have no idea. Quite honestly, the time and effort that you put into a job, you know, there are no hourly wages that can really pay it. And I must echo the point, though. Like you said, one of the nicest things about it was they did lower the wage at thirty-eight and a half, because now you get to see who is the passionate people out there, who wants to do the job, who wants to do the best by your neighbors, your friends.